Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the flag salute will be led by Commissioner Franco.
Betty Stan.
Eddie salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Roll call.
Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Franco.
Here.
Commissioner Sandridge.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Kissler is absent today. And Garcia, I believe he's gonna be absent.
I believe he said he will be attending online.
And for the record, Commissioner Garcia is gonna have to participate as a member of the public because his wherever he's attending was not publicly noticed for the public to attend. So Commissioner Garcia, if you have questions, it would be under oral communication, not as part of the planning commission, again, due to Brown Act noticing requirements at your location.
When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press nine to raise your hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press six to unmute and mute yourself. If there's any potential conflicts of interest, any commissioner who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter.
For all callers on the line, star nine to raise your virtual hand, star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, we now have oral communications. If anybody from the public would like to say anything, please step up. This is your chance.
And for the record, these are items that are not on the agenda. So anything that's under the purview of the planning commission that the public wishes to comment on, they may speak at this time. For the planning commission, we will take that under advisement and address it at a future meeting.
Anybody from the public? Go ahead.
My name is Allison Ying Bauer. I actually submitted a letter to the city council and to the planning commission. I think it might be included in your packet already. I did send it to the planning commission.
And actually, I believe her item is the public hearing item, so if.
Can you wait?
Yeah, if you hold your, too early, too early. So that item would be addressed, it's number one on the agenda. Right now, this is for comments, not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we would move on to Planning Commission oath of office. For our new commission member, Dennis Hall.
Okay, so that oath will be administered by associate planner Lupe Macias.
Yeah. Plan Commission, good evening. Mr. Hall, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the front. Enter in the stage, yeah. Right in the middle, that's right, so we can see on camera. Make sure you're on camera there. Yeah, so what I'll do is read the oath of office here, raise your right hand and just respond with I do at the end, and then we'll welcome you in. Please, please raise your right hand and respond with I do. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Congratulations. So yeah, you'll take a seat at the dais up, up there.
And now we have the reorganization of commissioners.
I'd like to nominate Greg Garcia as chairperson and Betty Standridge as vice chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I think you have a motion on the floor, we're just waiting for a second.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a second on that motion? What? I second that motion.
Commissioner Franco?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Congratulations. With that, Commissioner Standridge, you are still running the meeting tonight. Congratulations.
Yeah. Hey.
Staff will reorganize the seating accordingly.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
The consent calendar. Okay. Consent calendar, all items listed under consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll, by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any commissioner member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The commission can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Consideration and necessary action on the minutes of June 23, 2025. Is there a vote?
I make a motion to approve minutes.
I second it.
Commissioner Franco?
Yes.
Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So now we're at the public hearing?
Commissioner Sandridge?
Yes. Thank you. Public hearing is about the annexation and pre-zone to consider a proposal of the Selma North annexation, which includes 20 properties of approximately 150 acres within the city's sphere of influence to be annexed and pre-zoned to comply with the existing general plan designation. The properties are located north of Dinuba Avenue, west of South Delray Avenue, and east of South Thompson Avenue. APN 358-021-16-18, 20, 21, 22, 37, 47, 62, 63, 78, 79, 358, 361-07, 08, 09, 10, and 358-120-34. This annexation and pre-zone does not include any development proposals. A draft notice of exemption has been prepared concerning the proposed project in compliance with provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA.
Thank you, Vice Chair Standridge. Before you is a pre-zone and annexation application, as you stated, for approximately 150 acres on the north side of town, generally north of Dinuba Avenue. The proposal, as you stated, is a pre-zone and annexation application consistent with the existing general plan land use designations. Under the California Environmental Quality Act, projects such as this that are consistent with the densities allotted in the general plan are considered exempt under section 15183. Staff has drafted a draft notice of exemption along with a substantiation memorandum that identifies that no new or unidentified impacts are anticipated because it was, it is proposed consistent with the general plan. With that, there is also no development proposal at this time filed with the city for entitlements of any of these properties that are included in this application. Therefore, the proposal before you is simply annexation and pre-designation of the zone districts of what will be allowed as identified in your existing general plan. So we have a short presentation that we could run through, and I probably did most of it with my introduction, but. Next slide, please. So as we stated, it's 150 acres, all 20 parcels are located within the existing sphere of influence, which is a prerequisite to being annexed to the city. There are approximately five proposed zone districts identified as part of the pre-zone application because there are more or less five general plan designations proposed in the proposed annexation, so they're all consistent. This would eventually facilitate development within the city rather than the county. As we stated, this really just identifies who the service provider is and where it should develop. And then again, it is exempt under California Environmental Quality Act, section 15183, consistency with the general plan. Next slide, please. So this is a project location map. You can see that it starts at about Wright Street on Dinuba Avenue to the west and then ends almost at Mill Ditch to the east, all north of Dinuba Avenue. Next slide, please. This is a kind of a matrix provided by the applicant along with staff's general breakdown of the existing general plan designations and what the proposed zoning for each designation would be, consistent with the densities allotted in the general plan. One note, the applicant identifies commercial office as one of the pre-zone designations in their application. That zone no longer exists. That zone was written out of our zoning ordinance and rolled into the C1 zone district. So C1 would be the appropriate pre-zone designation for that, for that portion of the project. Next slide, please. So the purpose and process for this project, again, everything's consistent with the general plan, so no changes are proposed. You don't have any land that's designated for residential being converted to another use. Conversely, you don't have any commercial land being designated for residential or something along those lines. The pre-zoning is a prerequisite of annexation. When you propose an annexation, you have to state what you're gonna zone it. If there was a change in any of these designations, it would have been identified in both the general, a general plan amendment is what you would see before you along with a corresponding pre-zone designation. You don't have any general plan amendments because the general plan has already been set for this area, right? So really, they're just matching what was adopted in the general plan. The next step would be, the next step actually would be this, this proposal going to the city council, which we have noticed for the next council meeting on September 2nd, day after Labor Day, which is actually a regular meeting now because we meet on Tuesdays. Following, if this project is approved by the city council, we would forward the resolution of application to the Fresno County Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO, where they would consider the annexation proposal. Future entitlements such as track maps, conditional use permits, site plan reviews would be processed by the city once it's annexed to the city. However, none of those, we have no proposals included within this application at this time, so there's no further environmental review required. However, when there's future entitlement projects, if they propose a change, they would evaluate that in accordance with SEQA. One note, also, under the Cortezi-Knox-Hertzberg Act, Reorganization Act of 2000, I believe, proposals such as this, they're not allowed to rezone property for two years after it's annexed to the city to prevent any bait and switch or anything like that. So what, what is there, will be there for at least a minimum of two years before we could even consider changing the zone after it's annexed. Next slide, please. So as, as I stated before, for SEQA compliance, we're using the 15183 exemption, which allows projects that are consistent with the densities of a general plan with a certified environmental impact report to be considered exempt under SEQA. As I've repeated myself multiple times, this project proposes no changes to the general plan. And therefore, it is not, there's no new severe impacts identified as already in, already identified within the certified EIR, but subsequent project proposals would be still subject to SEQA in the future. Next slide, please. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of this proposal to the city council with the conditions of approval provided. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public?
Now it is, I'll start over. Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, I'm Jeff Roberts. I am the designated representative for the applicant on, or the applicants on this pre-zoning action before you this evening. I'd like to start out by congratulating the new commissioner on being seated tonight. Welcome. My address is P.O. Box 43 in Fran, California. I don't live in a P.O. box, but that's the, my mailing address that I use with the city. So for the record, Madam Chairperson, I'd like to state that we do concur with the staff recommendation for approval. We concur with all 37 of the conditions that are contained in Exhibit C in the staff report. And I'd like to really thank staff for the work that they've, and guidance they've given us over the last five or six months or so, to get this to the point of actually coming to hearing. There's a lot of work, it's not a typical pre-zoning project where you've got one district. You've got multiple districts here, multiple land use designations. So it took a lot of work. They, they prepared obviously the SEQA documentation that's before you in Exhibit E, and we want to thank them very much. I'm gonna make a very short presentation because the staff's done a complete job, as you've seen here tonight. So this is not your typical pre-zoning application, but it is one that we think makes a lot of sense because it fills in a gap that you see in the northern part of Selma city limits today. The pre-zoning request, as staff has stated, is a requirement under the Knox, or Cortezi-Knox-Hertzberg Act that you have to pre-zone property in conformity with your plan before you can be annexed. So this is that necessary action. In this case, all the, all of the properties are being pre-zoned in conformity with the plan, no plan changes. And I can go over these, but staff's got a matrix in their staff report, I don't think, I think that would be redundant. This is the first public hearing that's required for this process. First, it's the planning commission, then it goes to the council, and then the final action takes place at LAFCO, which will be three to six months after the city council considers the item, and if it's approved. So we hope that's the case. We would like to, we will be appearing before LAFCO. We've already met with LAFCO about the project and we're ready to move forward if council takes the appropriate action. After LAFCO takes action, there's a recordation of the annexation, and then you might see development proposals come in in conformity with the plan and the zoning. So wrapping up my brief presentation, I would like to just request that you do approve the staff recommendation. I think there's nine findings in the staff report that need to be made. We'd appreciate if you'd make all nine of those findings and approve the resolution that's in your staff report. Be happy to answer any questions, and we do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any comments? Or, or against?
Hi, my name is Allison Ying Bauer. I submitted a letter to the city council and also the planning commission, and thank for letting me speak today. The, I'm gonna go ahead and read the letter that I submitted in case you had not had a chance to see it, but it's, the subject is regarding a request for annexation of property located at 9791 South McCall Avenue in Selma, and the APN is 358-120-35. So it reads, Dear Selma City Council Members and City Planning Commission, I'm writing to formally request the annexation of my property located at 9791 South McCall, APN 358-120-35 into the city of Selma. I request, respectfully request that it be considered for the inclusion in the Selma North annexation and pre-zone proposal. As a resident and property owner in northeast Selma, I believe this annexation would offer meaningful benefits to both the city and the broader community. I kindly ask you to consider the following points in support of this request. One, improved access to city services and infrastructure. Annexation would include, I'm sorry, annexation would enable access to essential city services such as police and fire protection, public utilities, road maintenance, and waste management. These services are vital for ensuring public safety and maintaining infrastructure reliability and supporting long-term sustainability. Two, economic contribution to the city. Inclusion within the city limits would allow my property to contribute economically through property taxes and utility fees, directly supporting infrastructure, schools, and community programs. Three, alignment with city planning and zoning. My property is adjacent to existing city boundaries and aligned with Selma's long-term planning and development goals. Annexation would promote efficient land use, reduce jurisdictional fragmentation, and support smart growth initiatives. This alignment would also simplify administrative oversight and enhances coordinated development. Four, community engagement and representation. Becoming part of the city would allow me to participate in civil matters, vote in municipal elections, and engage more fully with local initiatives. I value the opportunity to contribute meaningfully to Selma's vision for growth. Five, increased property value and development potential. Properties within city limits often benefit from increased market value and development opportunities due to improved infrastructure and services. Annexation would support responsible investment and urban planning. I respectfully urge the planning commission and city council to initiate the annexation process for my property. I'm committed to working collaboratively with the city and willing to provide supporting documents and intend council meetings or engage with relevant departments to assist with this matter. I am looking forward to potentially becoming a full member of the Selma community and contributing to its continued long-term growth and success. This is the map, this is the zoning map that was submitted. My property is the yellow, which is bordered on three sides by the annexation process and city limits. So I would strongly encourage you, and we would request that our property also be included in the Selma North annexation proposal. 358-120-34.
Can you show us?
No, she highlighted it.
Can you show us the slide of the whole, all the properties?
Yeah, on this one. Add it to the current, so it wouldn't be here.
Of this page.
Yeah, I don't know if she attached it. Yeah, that's what I saw.
It's on the west side of McCall, the property on the northwest corner of McCall is the property directly north that would actually square off the boundary. From a LAFCO perspective, they would probably prefer it and not be opposed to it because it creates a clear and consistent end of city boundaries on both sides of the street rather than one, one portion being further south, right?
And as a planning commission, we can add that parcel to the current?
You can recommend it be included as part of the proposal that goes to council. Staff would update the SEQA documentation to reflect that. We don't see a material change in the impacts because we would be, again, be consistent with the general plan. It would just slightly alter some of the information within our, our report, but in terms of meeting timelines for the September 2nd meeting, it's a relatively minor change to our document.
And no delays?
No, no delays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, excuse me, Allison, can I ask you a question? Okay, do you have a house on that property, or is it just farmland?
It's farmland, it's thirty acres, two acres of it has a house on it. My sister currently lives there. I grew up there, it's been there for 60 years. Desperately needs city. City services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Risa Salas, I have a question. A couple of those properties have existing houses on them already. How does that affect those houses that are there?
Jerome?
As with any pre-zone that maybe changes the designation on the property, it becomes what we call non-conforming. The general plan may already be in conflict with the houses that are there, but once it's pre-zoned, we don't go and say, hey, your house, your residential home is now commercial, tear it down, right? We don't do that. Really, what we're saying is we envision that area eventually being commercial, therefore what we're doing is designating, it was already designated as commercial or residential or what have you. Really, what we're doing is we're putting the development standards on that property and implementing the general plan. Again, if there's an existing house within a commercial designated piece of land, and then it's pre-zoned to the C, to the C1 designation, it simply means, you know, they can continue to have their house there, they can make repairs within what the zoning ordinance allows. However, if it were demolished and to be rebuilt, it would need to be a commercial property, right? And so really what we're saying is this is what we envision this area being, but as with most things, and I.
You're not gonna force it.
No, we don't, and our zoning ordinance makes accommodations for what we term non-conforming uses. If the zoning changed or was established in conflict with what the use was, there's a period that they're allowed to continue that use, they're allowed to make repairs, they're allowed to do, you know, various maintenance to their property with that existing use. We do not go back and say, demo your house today, this is commercial, right? And really what we try to do is, you know, that's why we have these public hearings so that they become aware of the changes to their property, right? As I state, I think on the record, most of the time, most of the things that we approve, I may not see really what this is saying in the general plan. I may not see really what this is saying and the general plan says is this area is supposed to be commercial, high-density residential, low-density residential when it's developed, right? And so again, it just simply becomes non-conforming. They're allowed to continue with the existing use as it, as it sits.
What happens if that? I, I'm thinking of the one that's right on the corner of McCall and, and Dinuba. And there's an accident and a car hits it and takes out half the house. Can they rebuild their house or do they have to at that point? I mean, if they, if the house is not salvageable, and then would they not have permission to rebuild their house at that point?
That is correct.
So real quickly on that, so that would be a loss for the owner of the home? Of course, he would probably get reimbursed by the insurance, correct?
I mean, I would imagine whatever their insurance policy is for damage of the home, what have you. If the home was destroyed, I think we have provisions for so much being destroyed, fifty percent or more. They're not allowed to rebuild it, right? So if, again, the land use policy on that corner is that it's supposed to be commercial. It was developed in the county. The county has different land use policies than the city. The city views that corner as a commercial corner. So, and this is, this is not an atypical thing. People, real estate agents submit letters, they call them burn down letters on a regular basis on property to confirm whether or not the home can be rebuilt or not on that piece of property. Routinely, we tell people, you know what, you wouldn't be able to rebuild it here because this home was built on a commercial property that was subsequently changed. So if it burned down, you would not be able to rebuild it because the land use policy of the city is it, is that this property will eventually be commercial. Maybe not right now because you live in it, but at some point in the future, it's supposed to be commercial. So at the end of the day, it's the land use policy of the city that that corner becomes commercial. And so we act accordingly and pre-zone it accordingly.
With that zoning change, that property would be increased in value anyways.
I'm not a real estate agent, but I would imagine so.
Yeah.
It will.
Yeah.
Stella Ramirez, Selma, California. I have a question. And quote me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that Dinuba Avenue, that's county. So it would now become city, right? Is that correct? Okay, so I'm sorry.
Wait, that Jerome answered.
Northwest, northeast corner of Dinuba Avenue is in the city. And so there's a portion that is already within the city.
Okay, so when that road gets fixed, then the city would pay the cost for that?
Future development at the time it's, you know, proposes their development would likely be required to improve the street to city standards. I think that's the big difference between city and county. City has certain standards that usually includes curb gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, whereas the county doesn't. They usually have unpaved shoulder, no gutter, no streetlights. And so when future development occurs, they would be responsible for improving their frontage in accordance with city standards.
So the lights that we're going to go, are supposed to go on there on McCall? And Dinuba will no longer go on there?
Are you talking about the street light?
The traffic light?
The traffic light is still under construction. We're still proceeding. We have a grant to do that. We're still working through the process to complete the street light. There is no change to that plan.
All right, thank you.
As is Dinuba Avenue will be in the future broadened and-
Dinuba is designated an arterial roadway in the general plan, which is I think anywhere from seventy-four to eighty-two feet wide, which would be about four lanes of traffic. Whether or not that includes bike lanes is depend on how much right-of-way we have. So as development occurs, you'll see Dinuba Avenue widened with the appropriate amount of lanes on the frontage and maybe transition down. I think we've had those discussions with at least one or two prospective developers in that area about what the transitions look like from the intersection, things like that. And I think even the traffic light plan envisions a wider Dinuba at that area, right? Because we have to acquire right-of-way at that intersection as well, so.
And this is one of the benefits of annexation.
I think there's multiple, I, I think there's multiple, and we can get into that maybe after the public comment. I think there's multiple benefits to annexation out in that area.
Anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Gladys Griffith. I live at ninety-eight eighty-five East Dinuba Avenue. And as I was watching the presentation, I see that it's pre-zoned mostly for low-density, high-density. And I know you've heard this before, but traffic is a problem already right now. And there are many times it's backed up a good half mile north of Dinuba and all the way down to Wright Street and beyond on top. And if you pre-zone this and it is developed into high-density, what happens to the traffic?
Well, I think that's why they're going to fix Dinuba Avenue and put the traffic light in. So all of that is kind of planned as part of this, as it develops. But as, you know, right now, what we're just talking about is being able to annex all this property into the city of Selma.
Developers, if I may answer, developers are required to do their part when it comes to putting curb and gutter and sidewalks and helping improve the streets prior to them get, basically having people move in the homes that they're building or the apartments that they're building. So one of the benefits of this annexation, if it passes tonight, is that Dinuba Avenue becomes wider. As Jerome said, it will be four lanes, so two each direction. And a traffic light will go on the intersection of McCall and Dinuba. So all those traffic issues that we've all been aware of, and I get caught in them because I live not too far from there. Hopefully they'll be resolved as part of this because then the city will have control, not just the county.
If, if I may add, I'd just like to make a note, the traffic signal is going in regardless of this application, right? We are, we are working through issues with acquiring right-of-way in accordance with the grant funding we received from Caltrans on the traffic signal at Dinuba and McCall. That's part of the delay actually, is working through those issues, right? And so regardless of that fact of whether it's annexed or not, we're working to resolve the, not the perceived, the obvious traffic issues at that intersection through the construction of the traffic signal. The benefit of annexation for, you know, is we have more control over the right-of-way. Right now, I think the intersection of Dinuba, we own or we're responsible for maybe like sixty-eight percent of the right-of-way at the intersection. We have to work with the county. If we annex the entire area, the entire intersection will be within the city. Makes it considerably easier to do things when you don't have to talk to the county, no offense to them. We love working with them, but the, the more offices that you have to coordinate with, it just makes things more, not to say harder, just more complicated. I don't say harder. I just say more complicated. And so for us, it just becomes a matter of being able to have more control. I think that that area is, is an ancillary benefit of the annexation. I think for us, we're aware of the traffic issues. As, you know, the planning commission has stated, future development in that area is going to be responsible for their fair share improvements. But in addition, they have to be consistent with what the general plan requires. And so the right-of-way for Dinuba Avenue is supposed to be expanded, I think, to at least anywhere from seventy-two to eighty-four feet to allow for four lanes of traffic. I think part of Dinuba might have four lanes and it goes to one or what have you, right? And so imagine that being consistent throughout the stretch of Dinuba, right? So new development will, will, they'll be required to facilitate that as part of their development conditions.
Another question, if, if it's annexed, is the city then responsible to supply water and sewer for the area?
Yes.
Yes.
I think to some extent, yes. I think development and the city as well as the utility providers, remember, the city doesn't provide some of those utilities either. There will be some coordination for extension of services on that area.
But basically, yeah, when they develop it into homes, it's supposed to have city water and sewer, if that's your question.
That's my question. I just wonder, I know that it's an issue because there's not proper sewer or water there, who would pay for it? And the last thing I, oh, did you have a-
Will, I'm just going to say, I think the sewer lines and the water lines are in process with S K.
The sewer trunk line, there is a proposed sewer-
There's a proposal for sewer in that north part of town. I think water's a little bit, I think, simpler in that area to extend because it doesn't have to go to wastewater treatment plant. And so water could likely be extended from Dinuba and McCall to directly adjacent properties. But yeah, those are issues that are being worked out between the appropriate utility companies in the city.
Has there been any progress on S K F and the engineers reviewing the size of that sewer trunk line? And an estimate of when do we break ground on it?
I don't know if there's an estimate of when we break ground on it because financing still needs to be approved by city council. I think really getting it out to bid is really where we're at. We anticipate that in the next month or two, I believe.
This is a closing comment. I, I just object to the annexation on the idea that taking beautiful farm ground and turning it into housing goes against everything, I believe.
Um, but I think the people that own this property want it to be annexed. Anyone else? For or against? Anyone online? Have any comments for or against? Okay, if there isn't-
I have a question. Are you bringing it back to staff?
Yes.
I was kind of waiting for the official bring back to staff.
Yes, yes. Then I will bring it back to staff for our discussions.
So a quick question, the, going back to the resident who wanted their parcel to be part of this, all those stipulations that the gentleman mentioned before, the so, conditions, there'd be applicable to her? And, and-
Yeah, I mean, if she's, if she's included in the proposal, I think there's a couple of the conditions in there that she could be subject to. One in particular is there are fees associated with annexation. The city is in a tax-sharing agreement with the central fire protection district where we have an agreement for transition fees to be paid to the district upon annexation to the city. I would advise any property owner that wants to be included that they would be subject to those fees. We can get an estimate of what those fees are. Generally, they're based on-
It just, I just want to make sure that those conditions, you're not, I mean, it's not like this other group did a lot of work for a long time.
Right.
And that, I don't know, you said adding it wouldn't hinder their efforts.
In terms of, in terms of processing, in terms of identifying who's responsible for conditions of approval, I think there is some discussion on that. I think the city has identified that applicants pay their own way with annexation proposals in terms of paying all the appropriate fees since they're the ones bringing the proposal, right? When there's an invoice for the fees, typically it comes to the city because we're the party of that agreement. We would simply invoice property owners based on that amount, right? And so I just want all the property owners to be aware of that portion of the fee. And whether or not, I don't know if there's any discussion about that or what have you, or what the city would cover. I don't believe the city is covering those fees due to it being a developer proposal.
So, and then my second thought or the clarification is this is just the first of many steps in order to go through the LAFCO process of annexation. So without this resolution, it kind of puts everything back at square one, correct? Without approval tonight?
Correct. And I wouldn't say necessarily many. You have one more hearing and then it goes to LAFCO. So, I mean, it is a complicated process and there is paperwork to file that would then be required to be forwarded to LAFCO and then LAFCO has their own process that they go through, which includes, again, notification of property owners, routing to affected agencies and what have you before they go to hearing. So if you're looking at steps, then yeah, in terms of hearings, you have one more hearing and then the city is-
Yeah, but what I'm saying is this group of residents or landowners, I should say. I mean, I'm, my gut is telling me they've been at it for a while. It's just not something like, oh, hey, three months ago, let's get together and put this together. So, so they've been putting a lot of effort and time into this. So it, it's kind of shows the importance of this, this, all these next three steps are very critical as far as expanding the growth in our community and, and giving the city the ability to grow and bring in some housing, eventually sometime in the future. Those are my only comments I have.
Not discuss.
Public.
Record to public.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question about the property at McCall and Dinuba. There's that corner there, which is prime retail location. And right now, it is scheduled, it is zone C-one. And I would like city staff to consider zoning it, broadening that definition of that zone to a retail strip center so that it could include a cafe or a sandwich shop or a coffee shop or an ice cream parlor. In my discussions earlier about that, if that is going to be developed, that's just like prime retail space. And right now, I think the idea is to put professional offices there, which I don't think is a good use for that prime location as professional offices, whether or not it's a doctor's office or something else.
C-one doesn't mean offices only.
Well, not only.
I'll let stop, sir.
Yeah, so only, but I think that was kind of the plan is to push professional offices there.
There's, for the record, there's no plan to push anything. It's a property owner free-market type of deal. I mean, a corner property, best, highest and best use is usually what people do for commercial property, right? And so if the private property owner feels like a strip center is the best use of their property, the zoning ordinance identifies what uses would be allowed in that strip center. Professional offices is one of multiple uses that could be allowed if someone were to propose that.
But there's, in that classification, in that zone classification, you cannot have a sit-down restaurant of any kind. Doesn't matter if it's ten seats or fifteen seats or a small little place. You can't have a sit-down. And I think that would be a prime location for something like that.
But-
But it sounds like the owner does not want it to be.
Not necessarily. This is a city.
I mean, the C-one zone district identifies what we call neighborhood commercial uses, which are usually items for like short trips, so convenience store, gas station, I think is allowed. Gas stations are not allowed, but usually like short distance retail type uses, right? It does allow drive-through facilities, but eating establishment and restaurants is not allowed in the C-one zone, which is, I think, the point Commissioner Standridge is stating. That being said, we take comments such as these, which I think are separate and apart from the project proposal.
Right.
And we put them in our back pocket when we do comprehensive zoning updates and look at some of these things that are mentioned at meetings. So what I would state is I think Commissioner Standridge's concern is separate and apart from the project and more of an item to be considered as part of the zoning code.
Yes.
But the other thing to can, to consider, when you have that many residential homes around it, those homeowners will probably not want to see a restaurant right there sit down with a potential to have a beer and wine license or alcohol. And, you know, it becomes a nuisance to the peace and quiet of, you know, so you have to consider both ways. And that's why in neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, C-one is usually the most recommended.
Yeah, and as a matter of how the zoning ordinance is constructed, C-one is usually the lowest intensity commercial zone.
Right.
But to that point, liquor licenses are not allowed in C-one. And so you could have a restaurant that doesn't serve alcohol, in theory.
You can't even have an ice cream parlor or a Subway sandwich shop, which would, which would benefit all of those people living in that area. Or a little coffee shop. That would be a benefit. They can't sit.
Center across the street.
But they don't have those things.
But-
I mean, there is a need to break up.
I just would like to see it investigated into the broader definition of retail strip center versus the-
Well, I think all this hypothetical talking we're talking about is, is true, but as I said, this is just to annex it and those zonings will be in place in two years. And I don't think within two years, nobody's going to knock down any property and build in, you know, bring in a steakhouse. And they do have the right to say, I want to bring in a steakhouse. Can I re, can I come and rezone that, that parcel? Can't, can't they?
Yeah, and, and the thing that I would also state, I think Commissioner Corey makes a good point. If the planning commission determines that maybe this corner should be higher intensity commercial, we have zones that allow for those types of- we have zones that allow for those types of uses. Generally speaking, the C one zone, again, is meant to be a low intensity commercial zone. And it may not work at every commercial corner where we have neighbor, neighborhood commercial, right? And so we want to be clear, you know, when we update zoning ordinances and we make changes, again, this is separate and apart from the project proposal before you, and this is just a general comment. We want to make sure that any changes we make to the zoning ordinance, we're not taking with just one property in mind because it applies to the whole city. And so when we make changes, we have to be mindful, those changes affect other locations in the city. And I think to Commissioner Franco's point, if they would really, really, really like a use that's not identified in the C one zone, they can petition to have that use allowed by another zone district, at which time you would go through the same public hearing process before your body as well as the planning, as well as the city council. And so to that end, I don't necessarily disagree that the zoning ordinance could, you know, be amended, but we always need to be mindful of how those changes affect other properties within the city.
Right, well, I would like to make a motion to approve the annexation and prezone and recommend approval to city council as well as the staff working with the property owner who asked to add her twenty acres to this annexation to see if she's okay paying her fair share of the fees that the other owners have paid and make it work by the deadline of the next city council meeting.
I second that.
Okay, before we take, well, I have a quick question, um, how much is the fee?
Yeah, it's basically the equivalent of ten years of the assessment that goes to the fire protection district. So basically, the way the transition fee works is it allows the um fire protection district to continue to receive the equivalent of the tax revenue that it would have otherwise received if the property was still in, within their district. And so it's, I think it's based off of um the assessed value of the property. And so it would be dependent on the, the assessed value of each property, but I want to say it's a very incremental percentage. I can, I can get that maybe in about two minutes. But you you have a motion on the floor right now. And we can update the planning commission with that information so that they're aware and then we'll obviously forward it to the project applicant as well, and and as well as the adjacent property owner.
Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco?
Yes.
Commissioner Standridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion approved. Congratulations. Ask if there's anything else.
Is there anything that anybody would like to discuss before?
I mean, it's not on the agenda, we don't have a second uh public communication. I think staff has a couple of comments. Um, one, we bid adieu to our city planner Kamara Biogi. Uh, what was that, a week and a half ago, um, was his last day at the city, we're all sorry to see him go. He he's obviously on his way to do other things and we know will do him well, so we want to just uh communicate out to him in cyberspace that we appreciate the time he was here. We were talking about it and actually he is the first city planner, I think, in the history of the city of Selma because we created that position, so.
Wow.
Uh, he did it, he held the title um with dignity and uh we just appreciate for the time that we had him here. So um with that, I don't, I I, we communicate the same thing at city council. With him being gone, um and some staff changes that we've had, we get to comments as we get them as quickly as we can. We have a general policy to try and respond within twenty-four hours. So bear with us with our staffing uh issues right now, but we will still aim for that twenty-four hour response period. And.
Sorry, a question on that.
I'm not done.
Okay.
So, and so, um, to answer Commissioner Ramirez's uh question regarding what the tax rate is, it is point zero 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 nine seven two four of um the assessed value. So the equivalent is if you had um a property of five hundred thousand dollars, uh, the fee is about four hundred and eighty-six dollars uh per year with a two percent increase over that ten year period, right? And so it's about five hundred bucks for five hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. So at the end of that, you pay about five thousand dollars for five hundred thousand dollars assessed value. So as you can imagine, the more property you have, the larger the fee will be. So some of the properties may have a small amount that's invoiced or what have you over that ten year period, so anyway.
Well, I want, Alice, Allison? We were, uh, he was just kind of explaining.
We can go over it with them, I have it in writing right here, so we'll we'll follow up with it.
All right, he's gonna go over the fees with you later.
So my question was based on what you said, does the city have a plan to hire someone else or?
We will, we will go out for recruitment, I think we're actually gonna go out for two positions because they're in the budget. So we'll um fly city planner and uh I want to congratulate uh Lupe uh for his promotion to associate planner. Um, and so, and so we will be um flying the assistant planner position as well.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, um. Okay, the the meeting is adjourned. At um, six fifty-five.
Wow, that's great, that's rec.